Good evening. It's Monday, September 15, 2025. I'm Christy Boudreau, Chair of the Hatfield School Committee, and I have to welcome you all to our September Business Meeting as we call to order. We are available to take public comment at this time to kick off our meeting. Is there anyone online that is joining us this evening that would like to make a public comment? Is there anybody in Zoom? Nope, no one in Zoom. Okay. So there's no one with us this evening, and there's no one by Zoom. So we'll move on. We can close out the Zoom account and go on to Mission Moments. And if this is our first meeting since school has kicked off, I just bet there are probably some Mission Moments. Would anyone like to start?
One of the things that we have done is every year, we have all-school meetings once a month, but I have found that it's an awfully long time for kids to come together in such a wide range of space. So I have begun doing weekly meetings internally with kids, and we're doing one floor at a time. So I had my first meeting this past week with kindergarten first and second about just expectations and getting together. And I did my what's fair is not always equal speech to them, so.
And that was some of their first all-school meetings.
Yes.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
I particularly like the all-school meeting in that I'm just watch kids progress and their ability to be in front of large groups and present, and that growth is really fantastic. It's one of those things that we get to offer as a small district that not everyone can. So it's fun to take advantage of. Other Mission Moments?
Sure, I'll go. I, just something that struck me, there's been a lot of great things that have happened over the first couple of weeks. But I was in lunch with the middle school, the new sixth and seventh grade, they eat together, which is great. And we had a group of students who've been with us for a while, and we had a, they recognized that there was someone who was kind of new to the, new to the school and new to their community. They saw him sitting by himself, and so they just kind of, as one, looked over there. They all kind of stood up because there, there were no spaces by them. They walked over to the table where he was sitting by himself, and they all sat down there together. It was great. It was really nice to see that. And it was not the only time that I saw something like that happen at the beginning of the year where our students were really welcoming, welcoming their peers even though they might not know them. It was great.
That's awesome. Anyone else want to share a Mission Moment? Mr. Ass, anything you want to?
Actually, just one thing, and I kind of mentioned it in the report a little bit. One of our students with a severe level of autism, new staff working with them, and they were doing some role-playing. And the roles had reversed to where the student was actually controlling the behavior of the, of the staff. It was actually delightful to see, and I was really, really glad to be there at that moment to see it. And just in communicating with staff, they said they were really learning a lot about the student and hopefully them about the teachers.
Awesome. I will share that I've just been delighted as a parent this year at the level of communication I have seen from the classroom that has been proactive and positive and engaging, and it gives me like a really nice boost of confidence that my kid is in really good hands. So kudos to the fifth grade, to the fifth-grade teachers. I think they're doing, that was, it's been awesome and really delightful to see. I also want to share my congratulations and appreciation with administration for the level of staffing that we started the school year with cannot be underappreciated because I, just hearing from other school districts and the kind of position that they're in, still looking to fill gaps here and there, and we're so close to being fully staffed to what our kids need. And that's an awesome way to start the school year. So, thank you. I know that doesn't happen by accident. Appreciate that. Next up, is there anybody else, something catch you in the spirit here? No? Okay. So there's a consent agenda, there's meeting minutes for the 18th and the 29th of August. Is there a motion to approve those?
Some are.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay. And then we'll move on to our, our feature presentation of the evening is going to be an enrollment update and conversation. So Dr. Driscoll.
Sure. Can you see the presentation now?
Yes.
And we're good on the, okay, great. So we're talking today about enrollment data from this year, kind of as it compares to previous years and trends that we've been seeing over time. So I'm going to start right off with our current enrollment, which is 304 district-wide. So at HES, we have 169 this year. At Smith Academy, we have 135 students, kind of doing apples-to-apples comparison to last year where we did not have sixth grade in, in Smith Academy. Our pre-K through sixth enrollment is 189, and our seventh through 12 enrollment is 115.
Can you compare that to last year?
I sure can, and I'm going to do that right here on this next slide.
Okay.
So here is kind of a breakdown of the comparison. So if you look, can you see my cursor on that screen as well?
Yeah.
Good, that's helpful. So here is last year, 24-25, and here's this year, 25-26. So you can see what the enrollment was in each grade level as we go down. Here are our grade levels on the side, and the total enrollment, pre-K through sixth enrollment as well as seventh through 12 enrollment. So you can see that district-wide, we're down seven students, which is unfortunate. I was hoping that this would be the, the first year in a number of years that we could talk about district enrollment going up.
To clarify, is the 311 where we ended the year, or is that where we were in September?
That's where we ended the year. And we did have a number of students join mid-year. And so we, we were starting more similarly than that, but I wanted to compare end of year to where we're starting right now. So total pre-K through sixth enrollment last year, which was at the elementary school, was 200, and then this year it's 189. So at the elementary school, we're down 11 students total, well, at pre-K through sixth. And then seventh through 12th grade, last year our total enrollment was 111, this year is 115. So we are actually up slightly at Smith Academy, which is nice. And when you add the sixth grade into the mix, you know, we feel more full than we have in years past. So it's nice to see at least that we have, we, we've started to swing up a little bit at Smith Academy. If you look here where the apples-to-apples comparison, what this does, this column is takes, for example, last year's the 24-25 kindergarten, and then this year's first grade, which is, which would kind of be the same kind of group of students, that same cohort of students. So it's almost, it's a diagonal sort of move. So if we do that, you can see where we are in this column, where we gained students and where we lost students. This is after school chose, school choice holds in. So we're, you know, the total was up, we were up a few students in, in first and second grade. Even in third grade, we're down a few students, fourth grade, up three students in fifth grade, down five students in sixth grade, which is significant, down two students in seventh grade, which is, you know, we were hoping to be the other, go the other direction there. Up a student, one student in eighth grade, down five students in ninth grade, which, you know, that's a fairly significant number of students. That being said, historically, we have lost more students in ninth grade because that's when we lose students to Smith Oak.
It would not be uncommon, am I correct, that that would be twice that number some years?
At least, yeah. Some years we've lost, you know, 15 students to Smith Oak. You know, 10, nine, nine in 10 seems to be kind of like, like the common, you know, average. 10th grade, we're down three students. 11th grade, we're, we're up, in 12th grade, we're up one student. So we received a student in each of those, those grades. This, this column here is a grade level comparison, which compares, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it shows, you know, what this year's first grade to, or last year's first grade to this year's first grade is. Again, that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Over here, we have school choice numbers. So this is the total number of school choice students in each grade level last year, and the total number of school choice students in each grade level this year. So you can see in total school choice students, we are up about 10. So we have about 10 more students who are school choice this year than we did last year. So even though we are, you know, in total down seven students, we are up 10 school choice, 10 school choice students. And we can see in this column here, the new school choice, these are, these are new in each, in each grade level. So you have 32 new school choice students who have joined us this year, and this is the total number of applications we received in each grade level.
Committee, do you have questions before we leave this particular data rich chart?
Yeah. The fifth to sixth grade drop, so minus five in that drop. We touched on this in subcommittee, but since we're more public tonight, what was the feedback on exit surveys on those students?
So we have, we'll go into exit surveys more in-depth later. My, what we, I'll start with what we didn't get. We didn't get anyone overtly saying, "I left the district because sixth grade is now at the middle school." That was not, not something that we heard on the exit survey. That being said, I, I think we can kind of read between the lines and maybe, you know, maybe folks' comfort level was, was higher at an, in an elementary setting than a middle school setting for some of those students. But again, it was not something that was overtly, overtly stated in the exit survey.
Did they choose programs that were going to continue to keep them in small districts, or did they choose programs that were going to, if not this year, next year, put them into bigger?
They, they typically chose districts that were, that sixth grade would be at an elementary level this year and in a larger, larger school next year, frontier specifically. We did lose, I think, one, maybe two students in that grade level to JFK, which is, I mean, that's a middle school model as well.
Looking at this chart, it, it feels, and please tell me if I'm wrong, like we're doing a better job of retaining choice students than residents.
Um.
Or at least, we lost more residents than we lost choice students, might be a clear way of wording this.
Yes, and I have a slide in, in a little bit, I have a slide that I think will speak more.
Okay, we can.
More to that.
Okay.
Specifically, you know, this year and then historically as well, when we get, when we get to that.
Before we leave this, can we talk about the NA and the apples-to-apples on kindergarten? I get that preschool is not the same as kindergarten in enrollment and how it works because of tuition. But my memory is, last year's preschool only had one student that wasn't local.
Correct.
So if we had, what, what's not clear from this is, of the 20 kids that were in preschool last year, we know one wasn't local, so that's 19. Of that 19, how many of those kids were age-appropriate to move into kindergarten? Because that's two, that 20 represents two ages.
Yep.
So what's, do we know what that split is?
I don't have that, I don't have that right now, right in front of me. We may be able to pull some historical data and get that. I can tell you that we had, well, and when we talk about kindergarten in a little bit, I can tell you that we had 18 students who we had originally, had originally signed up for kindergarten, but I did not, I, I did not pull the, the split within preschool of who is kindergarten age.
I have a note from last spring. Looks like maybe nine would be eligible. Is that jive?
That sounds, that sounds like it would, it would fit.
Yeah, and a drop from, we had 20 pre-K students last year, but only 12 in kindergarten this year.
That's what we're saying, it's two grades.
Yeah.
And it's probably only nine, it's probably around nine of those 20.
Only nine were eligible to move up to kindergarten. The others are still in preschool.
Because preschool goes from three-years-old to.
Three, four, and five.
Okay.
I have a question about the total school choice applications. It says 62, and our new school of choice was 32. So that's 30 applicants that.
That applied and didn't, didn't choose to go elsewhere. Correct.
Were there any that weren't accepted because?
No.
So they were all accepted, but they didn't choose to come.
Yep.
What are we doing about, I mean, that's half of the applicants. How are we going after the 30 that didn't come to try to get them to come? What's our plan there?
Yeah, I think we need to do a better job of outreach to those students and those families when they've accepted. You know, we did bring them in for shadow days, we did bring them in for new student orientations. So we, we did, we were successful in getting them into the schools. I think we need to do a better job of following up. There were a number that we, and I say that, we did, we followed up pretty regularly. You know, we called, when we hadn't heard back from folks, we called at least every other week to say, "Hey, you know, you've been accepted, we're just, you know, wanted to follow up and see where, you know, where you stand on this." A lot of those folks, they had applied to put, just kind of to put feelers out in case their student wanted to go elsewhere, and a number of them decided not to. But I think, you know, I think we can do, you know, as we go forward, I think that's when, kind of that welcoming community that I was speaking about in the mission moment, that's when it should start. So how, as soon as someone is expect, accepted in school choice, how are we making them, are we making their families feel like, okay, this is the, this is a place that's going to embrace me? And that should start, you know, with, with that acceptance letter, that acceptance packet with maybe more information. You know, we'll, we'll take a much closer look at that.
Who makes those phone calls?
Typically, those come from the, from the central office.
Okay.
From our office.
I don't know if it's addressed later in your slides, but regarding the ad campaign and the promise they made to us about numbers and.
Yeah.
How does that all play into this?
So we, it's, it's hard to tell what we would have got without them, right? Because we use them. Historically, this is, it's pretty much exactly what we got the previous year. I think we got 30 or 31 new school choice with about 61 applications from the previous year.
Well, we did advertise as well.
We advertised, we just used it, we advertised differently. So we, we had pretty similar results last year as we had to the year before, and both those years were slightly more than the, the previous year and the year before that. So it's hard to, hard to say, "Oh, we didn't, you know, they didn't deliver," because there's really no telling what, you know, what the return would have been if we hadn't used them, if we had gone with someone else. It's really impossible to know.
I think they've given you a number that they thought they had.
They gave us, they gave us a number of impressions in, in applications, and they hit the, they hit that number. So they, they hit, and far exceeded that number.
I thought they gave a projection of the new students that you would get from their advertisement.
They, they did. They said they, they thought we would get 25 new, new school choice students. But it, it wasn't clear that if that was 25 on top of the historical 30, or if that was just, you know, 25 new next year.
But given that we gave up the previous ad efforts for their effort, like.
Right.
Kind of a wash on that.
It wasn't confirmed with the previous ad, it was just instead of.
Correct. It replaced the old ad. So had we not done anything.
Then maybe get nothing.
The pre-ad era was not 32-62. The pre-ad era was significantly down from that.
Yep. And the, the last piece of information I wanted to show, because people always ask, is about kind of the, it's on the, the bottom here, the, the percentage of students who are attending Hatfield Public Schools who are school choice students. So last year it was 31, just over 31%. And this year it's just over 35%. So that's the, the total number of students who are coming from other towns to Hatfield. The next, the next couple of slides just show a little bit of information, and this is what's available on DESI too. So this, you can see school year 18, 19, 19, 20, this is the total population of our district, and you can see that kind of steadily declining over the, the number of years. So from 18, 19, we had 436 students district-wide, to this year where we are projecting 304 to start with. And again, you can see that in, in both, both schools as well, kind of how that looks. These numbers here, whoopsie daisy. These numbers here, 189 and 115 for 25, 26, those are a little skewed because, because those represent, oh no, I'm, I'm sorry, I did switch that. Those are the apples-to-apples. That's, that's seven through 12, and then K, pre-K through sixth here. And then down here, you can see the number of students district-wide that we lost per year. So there's a couple of years that we have, you know, real significant losses. So 2021, 22, 23, 23, 24, we had a lot of students who chose, you know, to go elsewhere. You know, and this, this year, we'd like to see more numbers like the, well, actually we'd like to see numbers go in the other direction altogether. But, but you can see this year is more on, on target with some of those smaller years where we, we've lost fewer students. And then at the bottom, you can see a year-to-year percent decline that we've, that we've had.
If we took that though, and I think if we mapped that against the population of Hatfield.
Yeah.
The fact that we're down 2% is, I believe, less that, like, the drop of the population is greater to the drop that we're seeing, except for those.
Yeah.
Sort of off, those three years are, yes, significant issues.
Yeah.
But the five, six kind of numbers is more, it's, it's actually less significant than the population drop.
Yeah. We have, I'm going to skip ahead two slides because I, I accidentally reordered them and I put them in the wrong spot.
And to be clear, the number of decline is both school of choice and Hatfield residents leading. It's not just.
Total enrolled.
People moving out, it's everything, right?
Yeah. And then, so I'm going to skip two slides ahead, then I'll go back. But this is just a graph of that information, and this is a similar graph that we've seen before of the decline total population over years. And this is kind of a quote to speak, that speaks to what you were saying, and it's from the Massachusetts Housing Data Portal Analysis. We can thank Bill Fogel for finding, finding some information on that today. That the average age of residents in Hatfield has significantly increased over time. So in 2020, from 43 in 2020 to 53.7 in 2023. So over three years, the average age of a resident of Hatfield had increased 10 years. So that kind of, that's a pretty significant statistic in terms of the, the age of the population. And, yeah, that's just, just something, something to keep in mind. I know something that the town in their 2020-40 plan has, has looked at as well.
The resident population shift from '03 to '22 was down 32%. So last year, I have like good data on.
So total population?
The residential population of student aged, school-aged children.
Is down 32%.
Is down 32%.
From 2003 to '22?
From '03 to '22.
But we lost 30% in, from 19 to '26, or 19 to now.
Well, let me see if I have 19 to now already factored. I can't, I can't find it, but Adam is going to be, it's going to be pretty significant. Let's see, from 19 to now?
I mean, I did the math quickly, it was like 30-point change.
There were 381 residents in 19, and the last year I have data on it was a preliminary in 2024 was 312. Did you already do the math?
I just, I did the DESI data chart, so the 436 to 304, that's 30%.
It's, yeah, it's on the 20, 28, it's on the other slide.
But that's not necessarily residents.
No.
Yeah.
It's just, in eight years, we lost 30% of our student population.
Right.
In schools.
So I'm going to go back a slide now, and this, this speaks to that, that statistic. This, this is from last year's number, which is, this is looking at, this is pulling from DESI data for comparison's sake. So you can see how we compare from 2019 to 2025 in terms of population, you know, school enrollment population decline compared to other districts. So, you know, you see, you see a percent drop across the board, some larger than others, but, but ours is, is pretty significant there.
The pioneer number is surprising. Is that only their secondary?
That's their, yeah, only the secondary school. Yep. What I didn't do, and what, what might be worthwhile to do, because this does include all those years, is look at the decline after the 2022, 23 school year. But I wanted to give a, you know, a more broad comparison here. So we have, you know, we've, we've experienced some, and it's no surprise that we've experienced some, some decline over the past. So then the question is, who are we losing? Who, you know, who are the students and families who are opting to go elsewhere? So this slide, this is, this represents year-to-year comparison of just students who we, we lost, and it, you know, doesn't include new students in. And so you can, you can take a look here, 18, 19 to 19, 20, Hatfield Elementary resident student loss. We lost 10 resident students from Hatfield Elementary, 14 from school choice from Hatfield Elementary, 11 residents from Smith Academy, seven school choice students from the Smith Academy. So for a total loss of 21 district residents and 21 school choice residents. This data is, is as, as accurate as we can make it to the best of our ability using the, using the backups from our student information switch-over that we, we did over the summer. So we tried to reduce redundancies, you know, we went through student by student. So, so I forget who said before, but it looked like we were doing a better, someone said it looked like we were doing a better job of retaining school choice students than resident students. And this sort of speaks to that as a, you know, both school and district-wide. You can compare as a district, year-to-year, who we lost. So there are some years where we lost more residents than school choice students, or residents and school choice students here. And then there are some years where it's either even or slightly, slightly inverted. This year, we lost more residents than school choice students. This here, I will say, the, these statistics are a little, little skewed because this does include upcoming sixth graders in the Smith. does include upcoming sixth graders in the Smith Academy, Smith Academy laws as well.
And it also includes VOK?
It does. These also include VOK, yep.
I, I pulled DESI data on some of our neighboring districts in the last six months, looking at their residential loss versus, like, what we could tell out of that. And my sort of preliminary review was sort of like, I think there is a strong sense of the grass is always greener. And I couldn't help but notice that the rate of students that left, that were residents for Frontiers Districts, elementary and, and secondary combined, were leaving at a greater rate than Hatfield students. Which surprised me, because that's not what we hear. But they have a lot of students that want to go somewhere else too.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not uncommon for this area for that to be the case. People, I think more now than they have ever before, they shop around. They, you know, they look at what makes the most sense for their students and their families, and then they make decisions accordingly. And, you know, if we were having this conversation fifteen years ago, many districts were not open to school choice. More, you're seeing more and more districts opening, opening school choice up. I actually don't know of many that are not.
Is there anyone in our area that isn't?
Not, not in this area. There's plenty out east, in the eastern part of the state that are, that don't, but.
West Springfield still doesn't, I think.
They don't?
Well, last year, they were like one of the holdouts.
They have a few, they don't have.
I don't think they take choice in.
Okay.
I'm happy to be wrong on that, but I'm.
Their numbers are really low, I remember, from looking at them a couple of years back. But I, that could explain why.
Right.
Yeah.
When school choice started.
Can come back.
People looked at it as more of a permanent move from this school to this school. And it really feels like as the years have gone by, as you said, grass is greener, I feel like more people are like, ah, let's try a year here, and if that doesn't, if that doesn't fit, let's try over there.
Yeah, and I think we're starting to see, similar to what we did when we revised our policy about rolling school choice, we're starting to see more districts do that too because they're experiencing the same challenges that we had. You know, when, when we were going through the list today, there were, there were times we were confused because it was, you know, we, we found that there were students who came partway through the year and then left, you know, in that same year. You know, there's just more, there's just more, more movement around.
Or trance, transitions.
Yeah. And then, so then the next question, this is pulled from the school attending children's department, where are they going? Where are our students who are leaving? Where do they go? We have forty-one students, these are our residents, because that's who, that pulls from, who are attending non-HPS public schools, eight, twelve, twenty-three attending vocational schools, sixteen attending charter schools, eleven who are homeschooled, twelve attending private schools, and then a hundred and ninety-three attending Hatfield Public Schools. And we do have, every year we have a, a couple of students who move out or who move in. They do occur, but they're not, they don't occur in a way that hugely affects us. We also have students move in similarly. Some years we get one or two students, other years we get none. But it wasn't, it didn't, it, it didn't make a, a real significant impact, students either moving in or moving out.
Are you saying on this slide, I'm confused, because you said forty-one are not going to Hatfield Public Schools?
Mm-hmm.
That isn't a breakdown of the forty-one?
No.
That's like just other public schools that don't have a particular.
Yeah, so this is through school choice. Forty-one students are attending school choice to another.
They're still, they're still in public school, just not our.
Just not ours.
That's about fourteen percent.
Yeah, and of, of this group, I think the ones that, that we really need to continue to target and to continue to try to retain are those forty-one. Those are the, those are the folks that are opting for a, what I would say is probably a pretty similar experience at maybe a larger school. You know, we're not going to compete with VOK, and we shouldn't compete with VOK. That's not, you know, that, that's not, you know, not, not what we do. But those forty-one, we can, we can get them to stay. That will help. Questions before I jump to the next? So kindergarten, the story in kindergarten, what happened in kindergarten? Because I know that everyone's heard a bit about that. So we had eighteen students sign up into August. So that was, you know, we had, had hoped, hoped to get up into the, you know, mid twenties, but eighteen are who we had kind of registered, accepted school choice, had told us that they had accepted our invitation for school choice or had registered as residents. And on August fifteenth, we started to see some of those eighteen move. So all of our hiring had been done, it had been completed, and this is right before, you know, two weeks before the start of school year. Between August fifteenth and twenty-fifth, we had six of those eighteen families opt to send their kindergarten students elsewhere, leaving twelve students in total in kindergarten. Of those, four were school choice and two were resident students. So we, we, Melissa, I say we, like I had anything to do with it. Melissa called all of those families and either heard back or left messages and didn't hear back from them, just to kind of see what, you know, what, what the deal was that went into that decision. One we heard back from, they chose a school that accepts a voucher program for the after-school program, and that was a deciding factor for them. One was late, late acceptance to Pioneer Valley Charter, Chinese immersion charter school. And, and several had friends that decided kind of together that they were going to go elsewhere.
How, how many in that cluster that decided to stick together, do we know?
Four.
Yeah, so that's, and, and those are, those are our school choice, or what I would think were our school choice families. So that's, so we adjusted based on that. I mean, that's, you know, when you, when you, that's tough to hear the week before school starts. As I said, we did hire accordingly, looking for the two classrooms. And it's really, you know, I'm, it, it, it doesn't, doesn't seem like how we want to do business and if, to tell someone the week before school starts, hey, actually, you don't have a job, after they, they have plans for that, and we have, you know, we've onboarded them and everything else. So we adjusted elsewhere. We reassigned, you know, typically in kindergarten, we have a classroom teacher, and we also have a, a non-special ed paraprofessional in that classroom to work with that teacher. That's, excuse me, in addition to any paraprofessionals who might be assigned through IAPs. So we merged the classes and have a co-taught kindergarten class with two educators, which allows for some pretty, pretty great differentiation within that group. As you know, with kindergarten, you have kids who are coming in, reading early chapter books, and coming in and not knowing what a letter is, and everything in between. And so it really, it's helpful to have those two educators in that class. It also allowed us to reassign those ESPs to serve special education needs elsewhere. And so that, you know, that helped limit the impact of having one class on our, on our overall budget, which, which was helpful. But yeah, the, the long and the short of it is that it, we, it was, it was a, a late game, late change in the game, right before, right before school started, kindergarten. And then I, I wanted to dive in a little bit here to the exit survey data. So we did send exit surveys out, as we do to any student who leaves, leaves the district. We had twenty-four respondents, which, which was a fairly robust response rate, which, which was good. So I pulled some of the common themes. I don't think anything on here will be a surprise to people. We've talked about most of these themes previously. A big one was more opportunities. We hear this all the time, more opportunities for sports specifically, just, you know, we don't have volleyball, we don't have lacrosse, we don't have football. You know, students who want to play those and want to go to the school where those teams are housed, that's, you know, we, we heard from that. More opportunities for academics or enrichment. The enrichment specifically gets to that second point here about looking at academic rigor. So opportunities for students who are more advanced. That was a key, a theme that came up quite, quite often, both at, at the elementary level, but also at the, at the high school, middle high school level, too. What are we offering for our students who are, who need that, that push? And that's something that we're, that we're looking at. Big theme, theme that was, that was tough to hear was that, you know, students not feeling like they belonged. And some families mentioned that about the schools, but also about kind of the, just, just wider, wider community. So I think that, that begs a question of how are we really pushing that, you know, across our schools and, and making an effort to make sure that students who, who come and join us feel like they, feel like they have a place?
Those that didn't feel like they belonged. Is that across a broad spectrum of, of students? Is it?
It seemed to be.
Students that are all of a, like, is there a group of students in particular that are feeling like they don't belong versus just incidental, that just spread out?
It seemed pretty spread out. It wasn't, you know, like we had, you know, these four families all with the same kind of, you know, demographic profile, all felt like they didn't belong. It, it did seem pretty, pretty spread out. And kind of stemming from that, folks or families feeling that they wanted their kids to have just a bigger, bigger pool of friends. You know, we've talked about this before, that, you know, there, there is such a thing as too small, and when you get to that point, you can kind of develop more of a sibling-esque relationship than a, kind of a peer group relationship. And so some families wanted, wanted that option for their students. There, there seemed to be a trend in a perception that as a district, we were catering specifically to school choice students. And, and catering to their needs at the expense of Hatfield resident needs, which is not something, we've, we've looked into that previously and will continue to do so, but it's, it's not something that necessarily that the data supports in terms of, in terms of, of discipline incidents, in terms of IAP needs or rates. So it's, it's, I, I think that is a, an issue of primarily of perception, but, you know, perception impacts people's decisions.
Could it be a communication issue more than anything? I mean, and like, it could, it could be on us on the committee, like, we're, we're actively promoting trying to get school choice kids, and maybe it should be more like, you know, we're working to make the best experience for our own residents and the choice will follow, opposed to trying to get the choice.
It could be. I, you know, I think that's a, you know, that's a good observation, is that we spend a lot of time talking about, okay, how are we going to, how are we going to bring students in? How are we going to increase enrollment? How are we going to advertise for school choice? And we, you know, part of the, part of the ad campaign that we did last year, which I think we should do more of this year, regardless of how, how we, how we go about it, is really just getting the information out there about what we offer and what we do in our schools for everyone. Because like you said, it's, you know, we do a lot of really, really great stuff. And having, having kids and families recognize that, who are current students, regardless of where they're from, I think that's, you know, that's the first step in, in, in retaining. Because, you know, if that information's not out there, you're right, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to make that, they're not going to make that decision. We have to get it out there. Another, another piece that was mentioned was special education challenges. So we had talked about last year, specifically the turnover in staff. That was mentioned several times in some of the delays we had, had talked about with hitting timelines and getting those. So I think we're, we have a plan to address that, and we're, we're implementing that plan.
On that, is it mostly like families pulled out because their kids weren't being well-serviced? Or were, is it because other kids in a class weren't being well-served, then it was impacting the other kids so that?
It was, so that's a great question. So those, it was primarily families who felt that their, their kids were not getting the services that they, that they needed. Or that there, you know, that, that there had been so many interruptions, starts and stops with their, with their, their teachers over a couple of years, specifically their special ed teachers, that it was, it was challenging. And then the last, you know, big thing that we hear is that my kid wanted to learn a trade, so they, they opt to go to Smith VOK, which is entirely appropriate. So stuff, you know, when you, when you send this survey, you hear about what's not going well, right? You're not going to get, I, I say this, we did have several people who sent back, we really love, we really loved Hatfield Public Schools, you know, we, we had a great experience, and my kid just wanted to learn a trade. Or we wish that our, you know, child didn't want to go to a different school because her friends are going, but we're going to do what they want because we love Hatfield, Hatfield Schools. We heard some of that. But typically, when you send a survey like this out, you hear about the things that are not going well. You hear about the things that, that people are upset about, you hear about the things that are causing people to make a pretty big decision for their family to, to up and, and leave and to, to move their child to a different school. You don't hear about all the things that are going well. You don't hear about the, you know, the, the kids welcoming each other into the lunchroom. You don't hear about the college courses being offered in-house. You don't hear about the clubs, you don't hear about the, you know, the Western Mass Championships, or the, the, the Cockens Nest 2.0 that's being developed. You don't feel, hear about the changes that are being made, made in special ed, or the fact that, that we're fully staffed, one of the few districts that were fully staffed starting on day one this year. You're not going to hear about that stuff with this exit survey data because it's by the nature of it, you're here, you're surveying people who have, who have already made that decision to, to step out. And we got to figure out how to help them not make that decision.
So one of the groups I don't know that I've ever heard us purposely talk to is local residents who are happy here. We talked to choice families who are happy, what do you like about us? Because that's one of the really big things that we can help promote elsewhere. But I, I don't know that we do that for residents. And that might be insightful to learn.
Yeah, and.
To Adam's point of like, we're not talking about how to keep residents, part of how you keep any group is you learn what's going well for people who are happy, to help spread that. And I'm not saying that you don't have to fix that too.
No, and we do have some information we hear from, less from families, but more from students through their vocal data and through their, the SPPI surveys that we send out. But I would love to hear more from them specifically, about what, you know, what do you love about your experience here, and what do you want, what else would help it be better? Yeah. And that's, I mean, that's something that we can, we can do with our student councils, with our, you know, as we, as we increase student voice in both schools.
One last question on this survey data. Specifically for elementary students, is there a sense of how much of that is driven by the student versus the family? I guess secondary is probably very student-driven. Do we know?
I, I didn't get a sense from, you know, from elementary. I, I didn't, I didn't have that lens looking, looking at it, just, you know, the, my knee-jerk thought is that it tended to be more family-driven, more, more parent-driven at the elementary level. But I, I'm not able to say, you know, this, this percentage of students.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so then what's next? You know, we have, you know, obviously. You know, we have, you know, obviously we're talking about kindergarten and talking about budgeting, planning. You know, we're, we'll continue to review processes so that information is shared in real time about enrollment. Especially when it impact, it could impact staffing levels. Like we said, kindergarten, that, that happened really late in the game and I would not have been really comfortable making a change at that point because it would really have, I think it would hurt. And we've done this with our school choice process as well. You know, we've made changes to make sure that we have, have better data going in, that we ask for acceptances, that we, we ask for commitments. And I think we, you know, by and large, we, we have made good changes in, in that front, but we can continue to refine as we, as we go forward. We can continue to advocate to fill those school choice seats. We heard from today, this was not included in this because it happened after, but we have one student who we know of who's coming back this week, who opted to go school choice elsewhere and is now saying, hey, we're gonna come back because we, that grass is not greener. And, and we, you know, we have, you know, our school choice enrollment is open until, you know, till October 1st, and then it opens again for, you know, for mid-year. And we can, we can continue to advocate for those. And then, you know, we may have to have some conversations about if our enrollment continues to decline, you know, educational models, structures that best serve our students within our budget, what that's gonna look like. And that's gonna have implications for, you know, for, for school choice votes in the coming years and those kinds of things. And then to continue, really, I mean, I really wanna hit number four hard because this is, we do it well and we can continue to do well, is to continue to innovate with what we offer and how we offer it within our means. I think we have some great stuff that has been started, that's, that's ongoing right now. You know, we have, we have three college courses with students enrolled in 11th and 12th grade that kids are getting credit for right now at Smith, which is wonderful and not, and people are now are just starting to talk about it for next year. We're already doing it, which is great. We are looking at, you know, with the sixth grade up at Smith Academy, we're looking at how we can, how we can utilize the schedule at the elementary school to support a enrichment and kind of gifted and talented program for, for students. We are, we are doing a lot of stuff that we can continue to work on and improve. And then when we have, when we have good ideas about what we can, what we can add to it, we can continue to do that within our means. And I think we're, we're able to do that.
Anything from the committee? I think the data is hard to, like, we're all digesting this today. This is not something the committee's had before this evening. So I also don't think this is the last conversation we'll have this fall about enrollment. Obviously, we're gonna hear more on enrollment next month because that's when the numbers that matter for budgeting purposes come in. And so if there's one student coming back, does that mean that our number is only off by six instead of seven?
Yes.
All right, so we got, we got a few to catch up, but maybe, maybe the, the rest of the month will fall our way.
Is that one student in elementary or?
No, they're in a middle school.
Okay. And for the classes that are so, like, I see fourth grade has 20 kids in it, right? Is that two classes?
It is currently, yes.
Okay. And it, I mean, two, 10 for budget purposes, is this something where?
That is a conversation that is actively happening in school finance.
Okay, okay.
And I just don't think that there's anything ready for the committee for us to share yet.
No, no problem. I just wanted.
That is a very active conversation.
Okay.
And it's active across all grades, particularly when we look at.
Third and fourth.
Kindergarten and next year's first grade and next year's kindergarten. Because those two particular classes are population-wise really small. Not just in Hatfield, everywhere. It's COVID era. It's, they're small in numbers, not in spirit.
Yeah, because 20 kids having two teachers for 20 kids is.
But also what we don't see when we look at those numbers is the makeup of those 20 students. So yes, your point's well made, but sometimes things come down to how student services are met too.
I was gonna say, depending on the exact constellation of that class, a 20-person classroom is totally possible, but it might require two teachers.
Correct, it might not be a budget saving.
Right.
Depending on.
Just depending on the needs of the group. I completely agree, though. I think that, you know, that is something that we will continue to.
We're not gonna have a choice.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We, I mean, she's. It's not gonna be whether we want to or don't want to. It's like financially, we're not gonna have a choice but to look at all of that.
Right.
Doesn't, and it, and there may be solutions that are different than those 20 kids in one classroom. There may be lots of different solutions and I think that's the question.
Of structure.
Of how do we structure and how do we innovate so that we're first and foremost providing what students need?
Yeah, I mean.
And we don't always give them what they want, but we could.
Have a hybrid program, at least so those kids are not in like two classes that are such low numbers. Even, like, I'm not even talking about not having two teachers, but also how do we teach in a way that makes those numbers not be so low in each class? I know that, like, from, the only thing I know from my kids' classes, like, fourth grade is doing the model from science, I think, and social studies. But like, what, how do we combine a little better? But I will wait until that.
I, I think there's more coming, is that fair?
Dr. Driscoll, I have a question about the high school. Just kind of piggybacking on Amon's discussion about the bunch of schools with small classes. But in the high school, we have grade 10 and grade 11 where they're rather small. So obviously.
Understatement.
Yeah. I would presume we do not have two 10th grade English sections or 11th grade English sections or two chemistry sections or whatever.
What we have done is we've, we've restructured, so it's not in every class, but in some classes, like, we've restructured how we do math, for example. So typically, it's been, you know, ninth grade's geometry, 10th grade's algebra I, 11th grade is algebra II or something else, you know, it depends. So we've restructured so that ninth and 10th grade and then up into 11th grade, they have an option of where, you know, what, what their, their needs are. So, so even though 10th grade has seven students, they may be combined, you know, half that class might be with 9th grade because the 9th grade, half the 9th grade might be taking geometry, half might be taking algebra I, half might be with 11th grade taking.
Precalc or something?
Yeah, precalc or, yeah, or algebra II. So that we've, we've broken it up a little bit so that they're not, they're not seven students with each other and only each other all day, all day long.
Right.
And.
And it actually has allowed us to serve their needs better too. Because it gives, it gives them more, more of what, you know, what, what they need.
And our staff are having more idle time.
That was my next question.
No, no, they're not. No, so that has allowed us to do things like offer those VSU courses. If there's, you know, if someone has a gap in their schedule, we, you know, we've said, well, you could be point eight or it could be, you know, you could offer this course. And we've had robust enrollment in those courses, which has been good.
Regarding those courses and that whole innovative pathways, we've talked a lot about it here, but I don't feel like.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, that it's generally known, like, let's do a newspaper article about it or, or something, like, we really gotta get that out there and not wait until we talk about marketing for school choice.
Yep. Is there way to like really get it out there? Like, we'll see like Gazette articles, like, you know, East Hampton Elementary School signs gets a grant for a reading program. Like, why can't we get a Gazette article that says like, you know?
Yeah, we.
Look at Dr. Driscoll's innovation pathways.
Yeah, we can, we absolutely can. And we, and, and we have, not necessarily for that, but we have, you know, we've had some pretty good press in the past. So, yeah, we can absolutely be in touch with them. Scott, you're in.
Scott's gonna say, Scott's your man. Okay. Next on our, thank you for the enrollment update and we'll look forward to the update in October. Next up is a review of the professional development calendar. This is looking at our policies and looking at state guidance for school committees. This is something that is within our lane to review and approve. It has not necessarily been something we have traditionally taken a look at. This is an area, though, as we looked at the previous district improvement plan that we spent a lot of time talking about, was professional development for our staff because we have a great staff and we would like to invest in them. Professional development is our opportunity to do that. And so next year, when we see this calendar, it will be in the spring of this year for next year. And it will be coming from a broad community of, of input, which I understand is completely.
Completely filled.
Filled. And it has representation from like all facets of teachers. So various grades and focuses.
Which I think we ought to celebrate.
Yes.
Has never happened. I mean, we've, we've always struggled to fill the PD, PD committee roles. And I think it's great that we have staff that are willing to be that involved, which is fantastic.
How many are on this committee?
Ooh, great question, but it's a lot. It's more than it's ever been too. Yeah.
I didn't expect that much, but yeah, because it's great. Because it's still, it's like one from early ed, one from like every couple of grades at the elementary school. And then there's special ed and specialists. So sort of everybody. And if they weren't represented, they had the option of finding someone that could be their voice.
So can I talk about this a little bit? Okay. Because there's a lot of Xs and Ms on here. And we can, well, we can clarify this as, as we go along too. But basically, the, the goal of this year's PD is to really provide a menu of options for folks. We want, you know, we, we, we have some things that we can mandate. We are limited contractually as an administrative team to, you know, what we can say you have to do on certain days. But what we can offer is things that we've heard from teachers that they want to do and will, they feel will improve their practice. So we have a lot of different things that, the hope is that they can turn into, it's called professional learning communities, which basically it's a very fancy way of saying, folks that have, you know, they, they receive training and that training kind of occurs not just once, but it, but it, it goes on, you know, a couple of different times. And then they can put that training into practice in their classrooms and then spend some time reflecting on it and honing it and trying it again and reflecting on it and sort of get you get into that cycle of learning and application and refinement that really research has proven is, is far more effective than a, okay, we're all gonna sit together, you know, pre-K through 12th grade teachers in one room and get talked at for three hours and then that's it. Like, the one and done trainings really, really have improved not to, not to be very effective. So here, that's, you know, you can see the dates here are when our PD occurs and what, you know, what's gonna happen when. So for example, inclusion training happened, you know, it's, it'll be, it'll be happening in September. There'll be follow-ups in December, January and, and March. Restorative practices is gonna be happening in September for Smith Academy and then throughout the year, throughout the year at both schools to, you know, to really kind of zero in on how do we use restorative practices, not just as a school level, but also in the classroom. How do we start, how do we set up structures to really promote that? Strategies for neurodiverse learners. So we have, we are fortunate that we have a lot of, and not just in this case, but across the, the spectrum here. We're fortunate that we have a lot of expertise on staff. We, and we have folks that are willing to share that expertise with each other and, and help to coach each other and, and train each other. So strategies that work for neurodiverse learners. We have some, some trainings scheduled for that. And guess what? Those strategies also work for everyone, which is fantastic. And so we, you know, we've had a lot of experience where we're, oh, hey, I'm doing this because it's mandated on IEP, but it works really well for Connor over here who, you know, may not have that on a plan, but can benefit from that accommodation, which is great. We'll be looking at the science of reading, of reading and having some trainings that go along with that. I think that's also gonna, gonna go along with some time where folks look at curricula. We're gonna continue that conversation at the on-entry school. Trauma-informed teaching, this goes really well, impairs really well and very nicely with restorative practices. Those two are kind of like, you know, not even two sides to one coin. They're like, you know, the, the head and the date on the same side of one coin. And so we'll be, we'll be having those kind of run in conjunction with each other. Federal and sped updates, those were, you know, things we have to do every year. SRSD is the writing program, making sure that we are continuing to, to work on that and, and, and train for that because we have new staff and it's a great program. IRAD math, again, training for teachers who are new or, and/or returning and using that. Goalbook is special ed related?
For writing our IEP goals and aligning them to the standards.
Threat assessment is a, is a training for a small group of people. If you, if you're concerned about a student or students in terms of being either, you know, a threat to themselves or others, how to recognize that, how to help support that, how to get those students help if they need it. And then mental health first aid for folks who have not have it. This is a great training and it, it, it kind of goes along with the, the threat assessment training, but it's, it's distinct about, hey, you know, recognizing someone who, you know, might be just going through some, you know, a tough time. We don't know, maybe they lost a loved one, maybe they went through a breakup, maybe something's going on at home. And, you know, recognizing signs that, that some more intervention may be necessary to help support that student and what kind of interventions can help support. So we have a, a full docket. Obviously, not everyone is gonna take every single one of these trainings. That's the kind of the, the purpose of, of a menu is they can choose. They can choose what they think is gonna be most effective and beneficial for them. In many cases, some are, are gonna be mandated. And, and we can also help them choose. You know, if we have someone who is, you know, really struggling in a certain area, we might coach them to be like, hey, you know, this, this, I think you could really benefit from that and I'd like to see it in your practice. And, and I think the biggest benefit here is that you see a lot of trainings that are not just, you know, the, in fact, I don't think there's any that just, okay, we're gonna do this on this date and be done with it. There's follow-up, there's, you know, you get into that, allows you to get into that cycle of learning, practicing, revising and implementing again.
So how many of these would a typical teacher or ESP take for the year? Because I don't know if the follow-ups are like, oh, it's a brand-new group?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point. So, so I would say probably two or three. Usually these are, you know, there, there is gonna be trainings and cohorts. So someone that takes the inclusion in September, you know, they may take it again in January. But during that, in those intermediate times, when we have meetings, that's, that PLC meeting time, that's the time that they can spend together reflecting on that and, and working on, hey, I implemented this, it worked really well. Or I implemented this, it completely bombed. I gotta come, I go back to square one and rebuild. And then, you know, come back together as a whole group further down the line to, to do more of that and deeper learning. So, so these, it's not, you know, you may not have the same group four times. Probably won't have the same group four times at meets. But they would meet throughout the year in a, in a different way.
The ones that are labeled as mandatory, restorative practices, sped updates and SRSD, mandatory as per state or mandatory as per administration?
Yeah, from us.
Okay.
Yep. So like SRSD, for example, we want all, all elementary school teachers to be implementing that program. And so we can leverage that time to be best utilized there. We may not have. We may not have.
I would say that the special ed updates are mandatory from the state.
Yep, that's true.
Legal.
And science of reading, the, is that, is the PD on that, is it part, is it integrated or part of our current curriculum? Is it bolstering like Lexia or is it an additional thing that the PD on that?
Maybe additional. We already have training on Lexia if teachers still wanted to do that, but this is more about just trying to, again, review the five pillars of reading. And if there's certain areas that teachers are feeling like they could use more help and support and fluency practice or reading comprehension, those are the kinds of things that we would like to try to target for that. We still are in the process. We had a PD committee that was looking or an elementary committee that was looking at wanting to pilot some things. I have a whole bunch of teachers who are interested in, in doing just that. When I went out and reached out to the companies, the only thing they would do is send me one block or like one unit, which is like 300 and something pages long, and it's all online. So teachers can do that, it's free, but they don't give them any supplies or materials, which is very different than what they used to do. So we might be back at the drawing board or we might actually try to figure out if there are certain people who actually want to say, okay, we're going to try to pilot this one particular program and then come back and give some feedback, but.
I guess I would assume that the administration would have the flexibility to make some tweaks within this as they need to for scheduling purposes. But from a holistic look at the calendar and the subjects, is the committee, is there anything here that you want to discuss more? I would entertain a motion to approve the calendar if that's the case.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you for sharing your plans on that.
Sure.
Okay, and we'll get into some updates. We have one more vote later on, but otherwise we got a lot of updates to hear. So you get to, unless you want Melissa to go first, you get to start again.
All right, I'll go, I'll keep knocking.
Okay.
The, you have my, the written report, the administration report. Did the committee receive the year-end nursing report?
We actually tabled the, I would like to table the year-end nursing report as Nurse Jane would, I think, like to be with us and wasn't able to be with us tonight.
It wasn't in the packet, right?
It was not in the packet.
I didn't see it.
I know, I didn't see it.
That's why I like, I would have had it tabled. Are there any questions coming off of Dr. Driscoll's admin report?
Yes.
Great. What, can we just, do you want to just jump there?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Can you just clarify the status of our capital projects?
Yeah.
The design is out to bid.
Yep.
What's the timeframe looking like?
Yes.
I really want to get that parking lot done.
Yeah, so the.
Roof, then the parking lot.
Yeah, a couple, couple updates. So rugs are in, so that's great.
Yeah, that, we're thrilled.
So we were just waiting to, I think, the Christmas break, holiday break to do the front office, but they look great. The, the roof project, in the boiler project, we had, we, there were a couple steps that I was not aware of that, that needed to occur for projects of that size. The first is to hire an office, an owner's project manager. So you have someone who knows what they're doing in charge of managing the project. So that piece needs to go out to bid.
The OPM.
The OPM piece needs to go out to bid. So that happened. We have an owner's project manager. That takes, you know, that chunk of time. There is a design process that is, you know, the owner, the project manager has recommended that we do a design bid. So that is now out to bid. Once we get the design, the bid and the design in, then it will go out to roofing companies to bid on the actual implementation.
So the OPM doesn't have the design?
That is in fact the correct emotional response.
Sorry, guys, I'm just so transparent.
Yes. No, I'm just so with you.
So, yeah, so it's dragging. And it's, it's dragging because of the kind of the internal steps that I was not aware of that need to occur for a project of this size. I think we're.
Was it your responsibility to know the steps that were involved or is there somebody else that would have been?
No.
Sorry, you would say, hey, this is how we do this.
It also happened to all come in when there was not someone in that job.
I was just going to say, we.
So it just kind of hit in a weird spot.
In the town.
But, but things are, things are rolling now. So we have, the, the design is out to bid. We're expecting those, that to close.
You're asking someone to make us the design?
Yes.
Got it.
And then after.
And those bids have come in.
And those bids have come in. So once we have a choice on that and we get that design, which will hopefully be very soon.
And we will get the construction company.
Then the company will bid on who's going to do the construction. They can start, you know, depending on the design, they can start pretty soon. There are portions of the roof, you know, they're not going to be pounding shingles in while kids are in section in the class, but if they can get the new membrane on top and it's quiet to do that, they can, they can do that. And that would be great.
You're assuming that the designer is going to have another membrane on the floor.
That, you know what? We know what they say about assume, assuming.
Yeah.
So.
So in terms of like even like, how much of this are we going to be able to do over winter? We have to just wait and see.
We will know more once we get the design and once we get the, the construction bids.
So.
And that's, that's the holdup for those of you who, who may be tuning in. That's the holdup on the parking lots, too. The wise advice, I think, was not to do the parking lots before we brought heavy equipment and cranes in to lift all the roofing materials onto the roof because.
And that totally makes sense.
It would ruin the parking lot.
However, can we like get the OPM and get the designer and get the, can we do the bidding process for the parking lot now?
I don't think that part's going to be the hiccup.
I'm just, no, I'm just wondering because if it does still take.
Parking lot concurrent, yes.
Like a couple of weeks. I mean, maybe not the second, but like we can be doing all that so that as soon as the roof is done.
We can.
And the weather's good enough.
My guess, and I don't know this for sure, but my guess is there is a window on when that can be concurrent.
Right.
Because you, those bids are only good for so long.
Got it. That's what I wanted to know.
So the other question I had an opportunity to ask this evening because the town manager was.
I just don't want to like finish the roof and then start the three step.
And then start, no. Those need to be, there is a timeline.
And, and we won't.
And an OPM project manager should be.
Right.
Yeah, and I think the, just because of the scope of the project and I don't think the lots will be as involved. You know, I think we have folks in town who can oversee that.
Just for public airing, how much control do the schools have over the projects? Just so, just so it's.
Please don't.
Yeah, not, not much.
Okay.
We get to see the bids and we get to weigh in on the bids. But you really, you know, once you hire an OPM, they are, you know, they, they're the ones who kind of, you know, they know what they're doing.
Like a professional in charge.
I have no business looking at a roof design, but I, I will.
Does the OPM rat the bid to, or does the select board choose the winner?
Select board has final approval on them. Yep, those couple of projects.
So I had an opportunity to see the town manager for a moment today by chance, Dr. Driscoll, and one question was, when we first put in the cost that we would need to replace the roof, the estimates that generated the warrant.
Right.
It didn't include an owner's project manager or a design firm.
Right.
But I understand that town is not concerned about the total being insufficient. So I did help express that the five of us had a strong sense of urgency.
Right.
To complete these projects, particularly because none of us want to go back into a town meeting.
It's going to be my new MySchoolBox.
Not done.
Ready every month to be like, when's that parking lot getting paid?
Right. It just, it looks like we're shepherding tax dollars well, but there's.
Yeah.
There's.
No, I get it. I thank you for.
To Mr. Sullivan's point, there's only so much we can do.
Hundred percent. Thank you for explaining where we're at.
So that's where we're at on the roof. What about the boiler? When is that expected to be done?
So the, the OPM is.
Combo?
Has, has that out as well.
Same OPM.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, so I, I don't have a, I don't have a expected time, but last.
But the timing on that isn't contingent on the roof or the parking lot or anything else.
No, they can, they can plug them in.
I would think that would just be for the winter.
Yes.
We need it for heating season.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have committed to that, correct? That like it will be.
Yeah, they.
Fully installed and functioning before we need heat. It's been the promise. However, the HES doors are still not in?
No, we have.
On there, too, the doors, like.
Doors, yeah.
Yep, but we, we continue to hear that it's next on the list for the contractor who's going to be doing it.
Okay.
And no, no reason to doubt that.
The front entryway is done?
Front entryway is done. Yep, it's no longer sagging, it's no longer held up at two by four.
Well, that's good. Incredible.
That was done for the first day of school.
Yeah.
As planned. Okay. So shifting on to Smith Academy.
So I have the report here. I can kind of zero in on the, the two items here, the new programs update. So we have three courses right now being offered at Smith Academy, college-level course through VSU. So we have psychology, which is wonderful. We have food science, which is really excellent and exciting. And we have, oh my goodness, what's the third one? Pre-COCC with applications, sorry, took me, took me a second there. So those are all courses that have been, have been or in the final stages of being approved by VSU. So our students who are taking them will be able to enroll because of, because we are on a full-year schedule and they're on a semester schedule, they'll, they'll enroll in the, the spring semester at VSU and they'll be able to get credit for those, for those courses.
Because this is the first year and we're starting it up. For next year, will they be able to do fall classes and spring classes? Or is it always only going to be spring?
No, because we offer that, we are on a full-year schedule. So the way we run, we don't run a semester base, so all of our courses are year-long.
So these classes still will take the whole.
So these classes take the, yeah, they, they take the whole year. So it's a, even though at VSU they'd be taking them over the course of the fall or the course of the spring, we just stretch out the content throughout the whole year. So it gives our, you know, it gives students a chance to still do that, but on our schedule.
So they would start it in the spring and finish it in the fall?
No, they start it in the fall, they've already started.
They're just on a regular schedule.
They.
I thought you said they would be starting in the spring.
No, they enroll in the spring. So they, they've already started, they, they go through the paperwork.
Thank you.
They go through the paperwork at VSU in the spring. So they get credit when they finish the course. Yep. Because if they, if they enrolled in VSU right now, VSU would expect them to finish on their schedule, not on our schedule. So they wouldn't get, you know, if they hadn't.
They're high school students for a semester and they're college students for the second semester, sort of.
Sure, we'll go with that.
How many students enrolled?
That is a great question and I do not have the, I don't have the answer at the tip of my fingers and I should have.
Ballpark?
Several. Most of, most of the, most of the junior class is in at least one of those courses, if not multiple. And we are also offering the same number of AP courses that we've, we've always had to. And so those, you know, the, really, these are AP-level introductory, college-level courses are way to the same.
So it's additive, it's those three classes are, that's awesome.
So like just again, ballpark, if a student like really wanted to lean into the academic rigor, they're junior or senior, how many of their classes could be AP or college level? Like every class that they take all day long.
Yep.
Could be at the college level.
Yep.
If a student wanted to do that.
Yep.
And the schedule would allow for that?
Yes.
Nice.
Yep.
Because that, I don't think is.
Yeah.
Every, sometimes that's.
But that's the other one.
What about the requirements of graduation or the state or?
Those, those merge together. They're, they're not preventative. So especially once you're in junior and senior, you know, the mass core requirements, which is really what kind of guides us, you know, there, there are four levels of English. If you take a college-level English class, that counts as one of your, you know, that counts.
So that could be like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we work with, I love that VSU is doing this with us. Can we work with UMass or work with Lindsay or Joe to try to get UMass or GCC or something to open up an end state option for this?
I would love to, and I've been meaning to reach out to.
You mean like credit classes happening in Smith Academy but for.
But for mass schools, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and we can, you know, there was a more guarantee of actually earning college credit that transfers.
One of the, the reason I went with VSU is because they were already doing it. You know, they had this model already in place, it was already something that existed. They're a more centralized body than the Massachusetts State Schools. I mean, if you get certified for, you know, any of the VSU campuses, it's, you know, you're good at all VSU, but it's a little different here. But yeah, I mean, thinking about places like, like MCLA would, would be a, I think, a great place to start because I think they're experiencing similar pressures that may have led VSU to open this option, which is declining enrollment, small rural setting, you know, similar, similar pressures to what we're facing, too. But yeah, I, I think that would be fantastic. UMass Amherst is right down the road if they're interested in doing it. I did speak with someone there and they, they were not quite as interested as I would have maybe thought, but.
And we.
That may also change.
We do have options for our students to attend community college classes, but those happen at the community college, right?
Yes, those are, yeah, yeah. So the difference here is that we have our teachers teaching college-level courses on our schedule. So, you know, the commute to college is across the hall rather than down 91.
One of the biggest complaints these days is college affordability. You can knock off, you know.
Yeah.
Nine credits over the course of your high school career.
Yes.
Several thousand dollars.
Sure is.
Isn't it about, we do it earlier, a semester's worth of credits if they truly wanted to get.
Yep. If they really wanted to go crazy, they could.
Go crazy.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, awesome. How is the sports season off to?
Sports season has started great. So we have 63 student athletes this fall, which is a large percentage.
I was looking at that and thinking about the percent.
Population, yeah. So it's, yeah, it's great. It, it's, you know, it's, we, we host a couple of co-ops, so it's not necessarily all 63 are Smith Academy students, but they're all Smith Academy athletes. We have, we have 17 field hockey players this year, which is great. That number is, is more robust than it's been in years, which is fantastic. We have 20, 20 guys on our boys soccer team and 20 girls in the girls soccer team, or no, sorry, 14 girls in the girls soccer team, both which give us a little bit of cushion there. And then we have a middle school co-ed team, which is, has 12 students as well, which is fantastic.
So we have varsity field hockey, varsity boys soccer, varsity girls soccer, and middle school soccer.
Correct.
So there's no middle school or JV field hockey or?
There is not, no.
Okay. Awesome. Any other questions? Okay, moving along. Principal Petra, any highlights you want to bring off of your report?
Well, we welcomed our kindergarten and preschool students. It's always adorable to see them come in and the smiling faces of the parents when they're like, bye, see ya, and the crying faces of the children as their parents leave. But they have definitely settled down. It's just so, I, I walked into both kindergarten and preschool classrooms today and it was just amazing to see the kids were already in routines, they knew how it were to be sitting on their spot, they were already going through like the calendar and doing the weather, I mean, the jobs, I mean, they were just, it was awesome. Also that I'm just excited that, you know, we have had a fair amount of staff that have Um, also that I'm just excited that, you know, we have had a fair amount of staff that have been new. And one of the things that was really, um, asked of me was to really bring back, um, the consultants to do the, to work with the SRSD. So, uh, we have been able to release, um, and through part of our, our, one of our title grants, have all of our teachers released for two days K to five to actually have all-day training in SRSD. And then we're going to be doing some of that follow-up in those half-days for teachers to, to collaborate more on the writing process. And we're also including not only the special education teachers, because they are also so new, but also, um, the interventionists as well. So the whole school basically that's in teaching is getting trained and the writers were, releasing writer's workbook. Um, there have been some, um, updates to it, so we have received the new books and that's what the teachers are getting trained on.
So the teachers get pulled out and subbed in to work on this?
Yes, so right now we have subs going in for the full day and the teachers are in the library participating in, um, an all-day training.
Okay, that, that, that explains my confusion from the other day. My uncle mom said, I don't know, Miss Swanson wasn't there, but she was there and she was just like writing in a notebook?
Yep, so the teachers all started, I mean, the training starts at eight-thirty and goes until three. So basically teachers were like, I'm here, I'll be checking in on you, but I'm right down the hall getting, doing some, some of my own learning that I can then come back and help you with your learning of, of the writing process. So, yes, there's, um, a full-day training for each grade. October, um, is, kindergarten's a little different, they have one training in October and another one in January. But all the other staff, there's a full-day training in September and then there's another follow-up either in September or beginning of October. So that same thing will happen to him another day. He'll be like, hi, Miss Swanson, bye, Miss Swanson, I'll see you down the hallway.
The kids have Miss Hannah, they all love Miss Hannah.
Yes.
Any new info on BAN?
Yeah.
From what you told us last month.
Yes, BAN is starting, she's in the process of having letters go out to our fifth-grade families. She is going to be looking at wanting to do one of two options. She is open to the idea of doing it earlier, starting at seven-thirty if families are interested, understands that some folks are coming in on buses, so that's not an option. She'll do it the first part of the morning, um, but yes, BAN will be getting started sooner than later.
But only for the fifth?
Currently for just fifth grade, yes. We are looking at possibly doing that differently for the next year, but yes, we will try to think about opening it up. Historically, it's always been fifth and sixth. So we will, but we are open to the opt, and she is open to the option of incorporating fourth grade next year as well.
One quick thing, I missed the last meeting, did we discuss, I don't remember where the last meeting was. Did we discuss the school bus smash derby at the last meeting?
We were.
Before that, okay.
Yeah, no, um, that happened, we, I was excited to say that there were some families that came out, um, to support the painting of it. We were told that that cow box was going to be a great little bus to have and every student was like, don't get another one of those ever again! Yeah, we, we didn't do too well in that bus demolition derby.
I, I went and, um, several families went with us and I didn't know what to expect and we were all in stitches and our bus got crushed.
Oh, yeah, it did. Oh, my God, I was there watching the whole thing, I'm like, oh, my gosh! Yeah, now, um, ours at least ran, that other bus didn't even.
Yeah, that one hit and falls quick.
Yeah, so. Well, that's true, but yeah, that, oh, yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely get a regular school bus next time. No, no more will we say yes to the cow bus.
It was fun, I think our bus was entertaining.
It was hysterical, yes, and it definitely took on a lot of abuse.
Do you get to choose which bus?
No, well, no, not generally. We get, when we show up, but when, because we were the first ones to actually sign up and actually go, they were like, oh, we got this really great bus for you, it's a cow bus, it's small, it's fast. We're like, okay, woo-hoo, that's, maybe we'll win again! Yeah, no, we were the second bus out, so, but it was fun to cheer, but yeah, I didn't do as well as we were hoping.
I mean, it won in entertainment contest.
Yes, and it didn't catch on fire this year, because that was a few years ago too. We made the front page of the paper.
We, uh, we ended our reign of, our reign of champion, if you had that Smith Academy.
You won?
Next year.
No.
Oh, you didn't either?
No, we, we won the last two years, did not this year.
There's always next year.
Can you speak about fundraising at the elementary school? And give an update on what the plans are for fundraising, um, what the fundraisers are, how they're selected, where the money goes?
From the PTA?
Nope, from the school. If the school or classroom fundraisers are happening, that are not PTA fundraisers.
Hmm, you're talking about something I'm not a hundred percent sure about. Is there somebody who's fundraising right now?
So we all got an email and the kid, you, you may have noticed some kids in the class, in the school walking around with like stuffies.
Oh, yes, that, sorry.
Not the first year.
Yes.
At least the third year, yeah.
Right, sorry, yes.
I remember.
I thought there were individual classrooms, I was getting very confused for a moment, but yes, sorry, yes. That is a school-wide fundraiser that is basically, um, teach, the way it was explained to me this year was a bit different that now not only could they get classroom supplies and families can like, you know, support that, but there was also books that teachers could get to as well. So teacher, I had put out to classroom teachers, is this something you want to continue? Do you want to do this? Do you not want to do this? And everyone said yes, so.
So what does it actually, who oversees it and what does it generate for the school? Can you help us understand?
So basically it generates funds that I have access to that I can support teachers when they have things that they want for their classrooms that come out of my budget.
And can you know how much in general these fundraisers tend to bring in?
Around five hundred dollars.
Per classroom or just for the whole school?
For the whole school, per year.
This one in particular is not beloved by families.
Oh, okay.
In fact, it's plagued families for years.
Oh, interesting, okay.
It probably may, uh, there is some speculation that it makes its funds based on data mining.
Oh.
By the way that it seeks personal information.
Okay, we will not.
And there's a lot of, I'm sorry, you can chime in, it's been several years since we've dealt with it, but there's a lot of peer pressure to participate because there's a toy given out in class. And so the pressure and, and equity issues, if you have a family who has a, would have a difficult time participating, it puts them in a really big mind.
Are you hearing this from families too?
Yes, yes, we are.
I refuse to participate in this.
Which you don't have to.
Well, I do, there's a lot of pressure from my kid and wanting.
Gotcha.
Because your information is given to a third party and I did it the one year and then I kept getting all these emails over and over and over.
Like, to be, to be clear, like you don't actually have to give money for your kid to get the stuffy? You just have to give like forty miles or something.
Information.
Yes, so they're taking people's info.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I had to like unsubscribe and, yeah.
I do think that this year it was like in the emails, it was a little better explained, like if you do choose to give money through that, where the money goes, so that was a positive. But the overall model is collecting your information.
This year, oddly, it didn't come home to my house, so like, but it used to.
It came.
They came, they had a postcard with a thing that you scan.
Perhaps, it did not come home to my house. I'm not denying it went out everywhere else.
So here's another piece that's really important, is that families are not telling me this. They're not contacting me.
I'm surprised they're not saying stuff to teachers.
Yeah, that's why, and that's surprising to me that teachers.
I didn't say anything.
You're supposed to give out, uh, you know, like four email addresses of friends or family and so, you know, it says, dear Uncle John, and then you have Uncle John's email address. And so poor Uncle John is getting spammed for a while, weekly and then monthly. And then you think it's over in the fall, but suddenly in the spring, hey, remember that fundraiser your kiddo is doing? And it just keeps going.
It'll be the last year of that fundraiser, thank you for that information.
I, I think there's got to be a more efficient way of doing it and that's, like, if, if I can, like, from a parent perspective, what I would rather see is like, my, my student, my kid's teacher put out just like an Amazon wishlist or something.
Okay, that would be, but, okay, got it.
Because I totally don't trust this company at all, so I for sure have not given any money. My information, so my kid could get the toy.
Toy, that's the thing, it's the pressure.
Yes. That's helpful, no, thank you, and I will stop that for next year.
And just, I, I think speaking from experience, I can't remember if it was at the elementary school when, when this happened or a previous one. Fundraisers like this usually are really hands-off for the school, which is wonderful. Um, because the more you, the less you have to do as a school and just receive the, the funds, the better. But if it's getting that through data mining or through, you know, that's not, that's not what we want.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
So it's like anything, right? If you can't see where they're making money.
Gotcha.
You are the problem.
Yep.
Hearing my husband's voice in my head, it's really scary, so.
Nothing is free.
Nothing is, yeah.
So if they offer you something free, where are they taking it? And.
We had one year, we had the stuffy and then it was like.
I lasted longer than my child, that's what it is, he forgot about it.
But he's really cool.
No, it's not even that cool, it's kind of junky, but.
It's not that cool.
Dr. Sol Artis, would you, anything you want to highlight off of your report?
Uh, just a couple of things, I know last, uh, school committee meeting, we had talked about getting out invites early. We had tried to set a September first date, but couldn't actually make that day for getting all the invites out. We did talk internally about what would be more reasonable and we did talk about trying to chunk it into like three-month segments and see how the first one goes and then work from there. Things, just in the report, um, the, the vendors and specialized services that we contract with or we've hired internally uh, for some of the specialized services like individual tutoring for students with severe medical issues. Uh, also our reading tutor, our TVI contract is, is set for the year. Our PT services are still set and it's the same person actually joining us back this year that we were contracted with last year. So all those services are, are in place at this point and some of them have been actually operating since the summertime. The other things that we've already mentioned about goal book and inclusion PD coming up this month. And the only other thing I would mention is just taking some time to get to know the new staff that have come on board with us and helping to orient them to things like ESPED. Not every district uses ESPED, so some staff are, are new to it. Uh, but, um, besides giving them support in those areas, just also meeting with some of the staff with the late arrivals that we've had coming in, uh, just before the start of school and making sure that we're getting meetings set up to review their IEPs as a team and probably either amend or redraft those documents before the end of the month.
Can you just, um, clarify, the initial date to get the meeting notices out was September first, which turned out, you know, would, it had to be reevaluated. But with this new tracking tool, are we currently on track with scheduling the meetings or are we behind?
No, we're on track right now, yeah.
Does that mean if you have a September meeting, it's booked?
Yes.
What about October meetings?
We're going to be close to that. The invites have to go out at least ten days beforehand.
And this is across the entire district?
It is, yeah. So there are dates on the tracking form that actually dictate when the meeting invites have to go out.
So we have a new plan to try to do them a little bit earlier, but we are not behind.
We're not behind right now.
How's the structure working at the elementary school? How's it working out with the three, um, sped teachers? We have a K-one, a two-three and a four-five.
I, I think that, um, with the new staff on board, there's less of a sense of, I can't manage the schedule relevant to the, the amount of, like, the size of the caseloads are not as much of a concern. So folks have not been coming to me talking about, I can't manage this and get this in here at the same time with only two staff. So I know that folks, it, it seemed effortless, relevant to putting their schedules together at the elementary level uh, and making sure that, um, students are getting services within the first week.
Are the caseloads fairly equitable between the, you know, spread across the six grades?
For, yes, uh, we looked at essentially dividing things up into two-grade chunks.
Yeah.
Uh, and that seems to be working out well.
How did, um, the first three days of school and familiarizing staff with IEPs go? That was a big thing for this year that we were all encouraged about.
Yeah, some of that I blended into the presentation, the federal and state presentation. Because there are things in the TFM, uh, the, uh, TFM toolkit is, it used to be called the, the Purple Book. And the Purple Book is really about fifty-nine different points, some of them with multiple sections to them. But one of them, I believe it's Special Ed number eighteen, that reviews the fact that general ed teachers and other staff that work with a student need to review the IEPs. So we also after that had a separate department meeting. We talked about how that should play out, relevant to folks having access to either hard copies. If they have access to hard copies, they need to actually take ownership of those copies and make sure that they're actually secured, uh, in their rooms. Uh, but we also talked about in, in the future what we could do with that. And talking about the new information management system for like student demographic information, attendance, grades, things like that. How we can possibly actually download the IEPs and five oh four plans into that system and talk about how we would use that to just really have teachers review the documents and then sign off on it. I was going to say that that's in progress at, at this point, but we did have that conversation about how we could make the process easier for staff.
So just to loop back on that, how, how do we know that all staff reviewed the IEPs as per the contract? And so we know that everybody signed off this year?
Yep.
We, and we also designated time, not just for kind of the, the protocols, but also for the actual sitting down with the IEPs and reviewing.
Lot of material.
Yep.
Well, that was a part of the two days, that coming back to school agenda, we had dedicated two hours at each brick, at each building to provide that for them.
Even before that, there is, and I'm, I'm sure this with new staff coming on board and things, before the end of the year, we actually have transition meetings with the staff that are going to be taking over the next year. So there is a meeting for every student, April, May, June, in that time stretch, to actually go over each individual case with the staff that are going to be picking up the, the gauntlet for the next year.
Is the number of IEPs that we're managing same-ish compared to last year? Is there any notable swing?
Uh, actually, when I reviewed IEPs last year, I came up with a hundred and seven active over the summer. Uh, right now, I believe our number is around ninety-six.
Okay, is there, um, do you have any updates on the district improvement plan?
No, only that we are in the process of drafting up, uh, you know, a draft for the committee of our, of our next edition, the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-eight district improvement.
So in our last workshop, we talked about potentially having a September workshop. We, are we still looking at having that ready for later this month or early next month?
Yep.
So there's the potential for a meeting, a workshop meeting in between now and our October business meeting. So I will work on scheduling accordingly.
Okay.
But just a heads up, and I think key for that would be for the committee to have whatever administration wants to put in front of us for that.
Absolutely.
For a few days in advance of the meeting.
Yes.
This is in September?
Or early October.
I was just going to say, it's already the fifteenth.
The fifteenth, I, I am, indeed, yeah.
Yeah.
But we kind of need to know that materials are going to be.
Yeah.
Ready to do that.
It's hard, yeah.
Oh, so with that, um, there is a lengthy, uh, school finance subcommittee update and I, I will take the blame for part of that. We're gonna, uh, the subcommittee is asking to table the budget transfer vote. We have shared in our committee notes a lot of detail about what that looks like, so you, it won't be surprising news when it comes in in October, um, but that's not all. So, Mr. Sullivan, do you want to speak to that?
Beyond the lengthy transfer dis, uh, discussion, which took up the bulk of our meeting, but, um, we talked obviously about enrollment and its impact for this year and for next year, any changes that we will need to make in our budget for FY twenty-seven, um, for financial needs, for staffing needs. Um, and Christie and I both kind of expressed a desire to get rolling on FY twenty-seven as quickly as possible. Uh, we reviewed the grants that the committee needs to approve, um, so they are listed there in your notes. The school behavioral health grant, um, comprehensive school health grant, titles one, two and four. And then there's also a mass fresh grant, um, which we will not seek approval for tonight because it's not yet granted, but yeah, okay. We had asked Dr. Disco last year for, uh, a staffing grid, or I call that a lineup, um, and he graciously provided us with a draft of that. So, um, basically just listing every role in high school public schools and who is in that role. So sometimes there's the same person listed in multiple roles, but it's just so that we as a committee or a subcommittee can know that everything is staffed or that there's no surprises, um, that things are unstaffed. Last year there was a. Last year, there was a reading tutor, I think, at the high school that we didn't really know about being unstaffed until much later in the year. It was one that was like, they kept, they hired and then got ghosted like four times, but we just, we didn't know really about that until.
Because staffing information for us is usually, has been historically by name, and so it's very hard to see if there's an opening. So, and the FY27 budget will actually be built off of the openings versus who's in them to start.
As we review that, we, we learned that there were currently only two vacancies at the time, middle, middle school basketball and one ESP at the high school, which I assume is still the same.
Still the same.
Okay. And then everything else was all about the transfers, so trying to sort out which accounts we can move money from, money to. We also have some pending new revenue from state and federal sources that we're fairly confident we're getting, but we have not yet received, so we are planning the transfers not inclusive of those amounts, because we don't have that money in hand. But those sums are listed there, listed there, a Title I grant for $15,000, state additional money that was dedicated, $75,000, we're waiting to get that, two 40 grants for $51,000, and a REVE grant for $10,000. And then the rest is really about transfers, and if you have any questions about those, welcome to field them.
Yeah, I think part of this is, despite the fact that we're not putting that list in front of you tonight, just to know that there are new costs in special ed that are gonna, that there is no way to move forward without adding additional funds to the budget. And the option we have for that is to pull from school choice rep. So we're fortunate that it's available, and we looked to shift every spare possible dollar everywhere else before we did that, so the reserves are still there.
And the, the two main buckets for the, the need for the transfers is, one, all of our new hires came in with more experience than the people they replaced, so, which is great, but they were more costly. And then we have eight students using out-of-district placements, and we weren't planning for eight, and we weren't planning for, fully for the, we didn't budget for as much money as that's gonna cost. We budgeted, we really thought it was gonna, we budgeted big.
And, and to be fair, we budgeted, yeah, so last year's tuition budget for out-of-district placements was $275,000. We budgeted for 401. Our anticipated projection right now is almost 680.
And just to be clear for anyone who's watching, this is for students who are out-of-district placements because they have needs beyond which the district and likely any district could, could meet.
Correct.
This isn't, you know, people choicing out or chartering out, this is special needs.
So one upside is that we could look at getting a fair amount of what we're adding back from Circuit Breaker funds and school choice funds. If it's an out-of, if it happens to be a student that isn't a resident, the sending town pays for all of that, so we would get everything back next year. If it's a local student, then Circuit Breaker pays 75% after we meet the threshold. So, so you have to spend $53,000 before the state comes in and pitches in.
With the asterisk being assuming Circuit Breaker is fully funded.
And that is a particularly big asterisk right now, because every district is facing skyrocketing special ed costs.
Which, I'm gonna go back to Dr. Driscoll, this might just be something for you to have another chat with, again, our state representation, just highlight, oh, what our out-of-district needs, our sped needs are.
Yes, it's happening across multiple levels, including state reps, but also we had a meeting with the Secretary of Education, State Secretary of Education, and DSE Commissioner last week, sorry, the week before last, and this was, was the number one issue, from all the superintendents in the Pioneer Valley, about, you know, what the, what the costs are and really what, what can be done about it. They are, they have, and they have earmarked funds within the budget to review the Chapter 70 formula, which is a good first step, it's the first time they've actually taken the step to spend the money to do the research into what's not working with Chapter 70, so that will be good. And I suspect there'll be recommendations that come out of that, because the biggest thing that's not working for the formula tends to be special ed, just based on, based on what goes into it. But yeah, those conversations are happening.
So I've also taken the liberty to give a heads up into the finance committee, given that we're seeing this kind of escalation, it's, we're covering, just so we could say to them like, hey, we're, we're covering this, we're doing a transfer within our own funds, but it, the portfolio of students, they're not, they're not graduating out in a year, so we're looking at some increased costs for a while. So while we could get back a nice chunk of change from Circuit Breaker, it's more likely that we're going to need that next year to cover next year's needs. So we've fronted it for now, and hopefully in time it will come back.
Question about the transportation, the increase is $38,000, what is the total roughly?
I can tell you.
I was wondering if.
The total transportation costs for those eight students are just under $150,000.
I'm wondering if there is a way.
Can I, can I just add something to that? For students who are school choice students who are being sent out of district, we don't pay the transportation costs for them, the sending district.
From the start.
Correct.
But I'm wondering if there is a way to collaborate with a neighboring district of, hey, we have a student going to this place five days a week. You already have a van going there, can we ride share something, like, is there any?
Ourselves in the other district, or another district have been at a meeting, we've asked that question. So if there is an opportunity for a cost share, we try to pursue that.
I mean, because, say, the placement is north, so we could check with, you know, Frontier or any of their elementary schools, or, you know, things on the way in that direction of any way to cut down on the transportation costs by cartpooling. I mean, if we've kind of put that out there for school of choice families, so why not use that idea for ourselves if it's possible?
Are other districts better at dealing with special ed transportation in-house?
Don't think so. I don't, I don't think anyone's particularly good at dealing with transportation right now.
Okay.
The out-of-district transportations, usually you have to look for a vendor, and there's either two different ways that they actually charge for it. They either charge you by the route, which they don't care about how many kids are on it, or they charge you by the student for the route. And if there's a cost share, usually they'll let you know, like Vanpool would let us know if one of our routes is a cost share, and if our route is only kind of like one student on the route, and another district had the same kind of situation that you were just talking about, then they would let us know that, and our price would drop, drop, because it would be a cost share route.
Yeah, and just, just to add too, that, once again, we're, we're talking about students with really significant needs who are, are placed out of different districts, so oftentimes with students with, with many profiles like that, it's, you know, the, the vendor may say it's not safe to have multiple students together in the same banner, it's not, you know, not conducive to safety, right, so that's, and we have to rely on them to be, be the ones that make that decision.
My assumption, looking at the warrants, is that there aren't a lot of vendors providing the service. It is not a particularly competitive market on their end, because their prices keep going up. So there's, it, it seems like there's a lot of demand and not a lot of supply. So if someone's looking for, someone with a skill set is looking for a side gig, this is lucrative.
Last year, we primarily used Sweet. This year, we're using Vanpool.
Vanpool.
Did Sweet bid?
No, no, no.
Not that they were less expensive seemingly, but.
Actually, when we did put out to who was available, and there's one company that hasn't been able to pick up at all, Sweet was not able to pick up, I think, one or two of our routes, and so Vanpool was, and we ended up, really, by default, went with them.
To be fair, the transportation is getting close to the cost of the tuition. It's crazy. I mean, it's what you gotta do, but if someone were interested in providing that service, who would they talk to?
If it was a new company, usually they would reach out to us, but I, I do have to say the previous district I worked in, there was a company that did that, they were twice as much as what some of the, the other folks in the area were charging. So it, it is, I mean, it's a rising cost, but it's also very competitive.
I, I'm not saying you didn't get good bids, I'm just saying that that is a service that is, there's not enough of it, and so they don't have to be particularly aggressive in their pricing.
Same with school buses.
Yes, same as school buses, there's no competition.
And you meet with the other superintendents through the collaborative?
Special ed.
Right, that's what I meant, but. It's late. Years ago, there was discussion there about trying to figure out a way for the collaborative to assist in districts planning these similar routes.
I have only seen one collaborative over the years actually take that mantle up, and they did it on a limited basis, only to provide transportation to their programs. But it, it does come up, and there is a state system, the woman's name is Colleen Kavanaugh, and every once in a while, I'll reach out to her and say, you know, are you aware of any other vendors? And she does have like a website, but years ago, she was kind of like tasked with doing what you were talking about earlier, just this idea that there would be a pool where you could go to and find out if there were routes that were traveling through your town, so that you could just kind of like use that information to, to go with it. There was a fee involved in that, and a lot of districts didn't actually take that up, so it didn't turn into what I think people were hoping it would.
I bet there's at least one student going from the Frontier District to White Oak, which would pass right through us on his way down to Westfield. You, you would think there's overlap somewhere, but whether or not it's actually viable to pair students up in the same vehicles.
So as far as out-of-district transportation, our own in-district, White Oak is the only one that we're able to fit into our schedule, where we can do a couple of days a week of, of taking on those routes instead of paying an outside vendor for the full five days a week.
So, just an awareness.
Yeah, just trying to think outside of the box here.
I, I hear you. I tell you, people that have the skill set might want to consider this as an opportunity for employment. I don't know what their licenses need to look like, but it'd be worth finding out.
So my husband, it's his retirement job.
I think it's a grand plan, it'd be great. So, we need a motion to approve the grants.
To approve the grants totaling $98,043 as presented.
I didn't do the math for you, sorry, but that.
Isn't that?
Yeah.
Without.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
It's in the, it's in the first line of the grants.
Adam took care of that, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome, so the grants are approved. We had an executive session on, on the docket, in case we needed it, we do not need it this evening, unless you have different news, and so with that, I would take a motion for adjournment.
Before that, homecoming is?
The 20.
Is it that late?
Well.
No, 18th.
18th.
October 18th. And our next meeting is?
It's on your calendars if you accepted the calendar update.
I know you just sent all that out.
I haven't passed through those emails yet, Christie.
Yes, I know.
Just, all they were were little calendar updates. The next meeting is the 20th.
Okay, so before our next meeting is homecoming.
Except for the potential workshop meeting, which may come before.
So we'll have a, a homecoming committee email coming up soon to vote for the award and all that.
I'm saying you're looking for a school committee rep for that. Well, I will find you someone.
And before we adjourn, happy birthday, Christie.
It's your birthday? Happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Where else would I be for my birthday?
Why are you here?
Our last school committee meeting was on my birthday, so whose birthday's up next, we can plan a meeting.
Does any, we'll look for that to be special.
So with that.
So I hear Kathy's, and I will second the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.